Well, good afternoon, everyone, and I'd like to welcome you and call to order our Middlesex County Council meeting for Tuesday, January 19. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none this week for this meeting on our opening remarks, I'm actually going to ask Bill to share some reflections at this time. So Bill, over to you.
Okay, Chris.
You're good. You're good. That tea on the coaster.
Okay, thank you, Warden. A few years ago, Albert told Mary Gay Wilkins and I about his intention to drive to Arizona. Have you done this before was Mary Gay's first question? Not really, Albert said, but I will figure it out. On the surface, that seemed like a long and lonely drive to us. Mary Gay and I both expressed equal parts genuine concern and fascination with his plan of pulling an RV by himself for the first time while he traversed a series of highways and scenic trails through the Midwest, Florida, and on through Texas to Arizona. They make airplanes for trips like that, I told him. His reply was classic Albert. It's not the destination, Bill. It's the journey. I'm just gonna take my time and stop and visit friends and relatives along the way. In many ways, his trips to Arizona were a metaphor for his incredible life. Lots of different stops along the way, never wasting a minute, enjoying both the rainy showers and the sunshine, and always a focus on who he could and how he could give back to his community and the people in his life. My friend Albert Bannister passed away at the end of 2020, and while his passing marked the end of an extremely accomplished life, it most certainly does not mark the end of Albert's positive impact on Middlesex County or on the people he touched in his life journey. When I first met Albert 20 years ago, he had just retired from London Township after a distinguished 37-year career, where he displayed his character and integrity on a daily basis. His work ethic, spirit, and dedication to the community will not be forgotten, as his values are kept alive by the current generation of municipal public servants that he either guided or inspired. At a recent meeting, Ron Reimer reminisced fondly about the impact Albert had on his career, and I listened carefully to every word. He consistently used the word gentleman in his description of Albert, and I cannot think of a more apt description, as he epitomized that word in his career and in his life. While Albert's contribution to public administration in Middlesex was legendary, it turns out that was just one of many stops on his life journey. I fully expected that Albert would utilize his post-retirement years to manage his 100-acre farm, but Albert had other ideas. From proudly chairing the Upper Thames Conservation Authority and the Middlesex Mutual Insurance Company, to serving on the board of the Children's Aid Society, Albert found a way to consistently put his skills, experience, and values to work for the broader community in new and exciting ways. Albert's interest in municipal government was hard to extinguish. He loved discussing both the external and internal workings of municipal government, and in 2000, Albert started another part of his journey as a municipal councillor, which eventually led him to the Warden's Chair in 2008. During his time on county council, Albert's influence cannot be overstated. He positively impacted all aspects of our operation, as he contributed to every one of our departments. From a warm smile to a careful reminder, Albert was universally admired and respected by our team. I can think of so many examples of how Albert fluidly moved from cheerleader to coach to player on our team. But perhaps the best way to exemplify his contribution is to tell you that I briefly mentioned Albert's name this morning at our library board. The stories of his contribution were quick to flow. From Jim Maudslay's thoughts on Albert's ability to skillfully guide and word our library strategic plan, to Lindsay's recollection of how Albert ran a program for youth at the Thorndale Library, where they took apart appliances to learn about all the components and how they worked. Albert never stopped giving back to his community. Albert's contribution to Middlesex was priceless. And speaking of priceless gifts, I have to mention another gift that Albert gave our team during his time on county council in the form of a person that I like to call Miss Mary. Mary Bannister was a consistent cheerleader and supporter of past Warden Bannister. In all of his endeavors, and the entire Middlesex team benefited from her love and caring. Her hearty laugh, quick wit, and omnipresent smile graced the county building for many years, as she was the perfect partner for Albert's journey. What a journey it was, from public administrator to corporate board member to community leader, farmer, and warden. I'm truly in awe of how much Albert packed into his life journey, but the volume of work pales in comparison to how he did it. Humble, honest, and a true gentleman. Albert is universally respected and admired at the County of Middlesex. I would encourage all of you to take a moment today to tell a story about Albert, to think about his contribution to Middlesex, or to give thanks for what his leadership inspired and built. His was a life very well lived. It's still hard for me to take Middlesex County without Albert. While he may be gone, he's not forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Bill. You know, we all could share many, many stories about Albert, but I think at this time, we can all just take a moment of silent reflection to remember our friend, past Warden Albert Bannister. Thank you for that. Okay. We've got our minutes from December 15th in front of us. And is there any business arising from those minutes? Seems so long ago. And if there's nothing to be amended or added to the minutes, then I would ask for a motion to prove those as presented. Can I get a mover and seconder for that, please? Councillor Richards. And Councillor Mayhew. All opposed. And those are carried. We do not have any deputations today. Any inquiries or notices of motion? Okay, moving into reports. New business report from Lindsay Brock with regards to the Elderton Library and Early on Child and Family Center lease agreement. Lindsay.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through the Warden to council. So what we have before you today is a lease for the Elderton Library. And so in December, we completed a renovation to the space, creating an early-on child and family center. And so we've taken the opportunity to put together an updated lease with the municipality of Middlesex Center. And so the attached lease agreement is for 1,916 square feet of library space on the main floor, 1,193 square feet of early-on child and family center program space. And just to remind you that that project was created with a grant of $530,000 that the county was awarded. And then the lease agreement also includes 1,870 square feet of early-on child and family center storage workspace in the lower level, and this is at 40 Heritage Road in Elderton. So the agreement before you is between the municipality of Middlesex Center, the Corporation of the County of Middlesex, and the Middlesex County Library Board. And there's a recommendation there, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks for that, Lindsay. Any questions for Lindsay on her report? Okay, seeing none, then I just need a mover and a seconder to execute the agreement. You get a mover and seconder? Councillor Cornealson. And Councillor Brennan. All opposed. And that's carried. We do have an off-road vehicle bylaw. It's a report from Chris, but. See, Ryan, so I think Wayne's going to present this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. This matter, I'm not sure how aware all of you are of this item within your respective lower tiers. But for many, many years, the rule in the Highway Traffic Act with respect to off-road vehicles is that they were prohibited prohibited on municipal roads. In a very abrupt fashion, the province has flipped that, like, effective immediately. So I guess most engineers that I know and legal counsel that I know from municipalities don't think that's a good idea. There's serious safety and liability issues in that respect, especially the higher the speed limit is. And I know that with respect to Chris, that's his concern from an engineering perspective. That's the concern of the police from their perspective. It's also my concern from a legal perspective. Also, the regulation is drafted in an extremely confusing manner. You have to jump around a lot. It's and it's just very, very confusing. So it actually doesn't apply to the county, but it applies to the lower tiers in the county, because the way they have drafted it is, if you're on a schedule, it flips the rule, and the lower tiers are on the schedule and the county is not. But what Chris wanted to do here is to eliminate the confusion. He wanted to pass a bylaw to confirm what the rule is in the county. And the rule is in the county is that off-road vehicles are not allowed to be driving on county roads. There are a couple of exceptions listed in the bylaw for farming and for municipal purposes. Those are ones that are also listed in the regulation, so everything matches there. So Chris really was looking to have this bylaw passed just for clarity. And that's really the long and short of it. I think I can probably answer some other questions if you have them.
Thank you for that, Wayne. Any questions for Wayne on this? Councillor Vanderheiden.
Yes, thank you through the Warden. Thanks for the report. I know that Chris wrote it, but thank you for delivering that to us, Wayne. I agree, and I will I will be voting in favor of this. We also are having a report at our food services today on the same issue, because we have to make sure that we are pretty consistent across the county. Otherwise, it doesn't work for any of us. So so thank you for that, and just thought I would let you know that I'm going to be voting in favor.
Thank you for that. Councillor Mayhew.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. Wayne, thank you for the report. Wayne, I understand the concept of not driving on a county road, but that doesn't forfeit the privilege of crossing a county road if they need be.
Through you, Madam Warden, that's correct, Councillor Mayhew. There are certain provincially approved crossings that you can cross with off-road vehicles, and that those are recognized in the bylaw. There are certain prerequisites, though, that you have to meet in order to do that. You have to follow the speed limit, but but you have they also have to be provincially recognized ones by regulation. So we really don't have much of a choice in that respect. But then also, the farming exception and then the municipal slash emergency work exception applies. But even there, you have to follow the basic speed limit rules and other rules that regularly apply when you do that. So in terms of exceptions, I think the necessary amount of exceptions are in the bylaw, so that it's not, you know, it's not an unwieldy bylaw in that respect.
Does that answer your question? Are you good with that, Councillor Mayhew? Good. Councillor Smith.
Through the Warden, just comment if this is approved. I was just wondering what the next steps would be for getting it out into the public with either press release or on social media, just so then everyone knows of the bylaw that's being approved.
I don't know who wants to answer that one, but next steps, I guess, on communication.
Wayne, I guess I'll take that. So what we can do is develop a quick communication strategy to bring awareness to this bylaw, just so that the community knows what's going on. That could come in the form of social media, local media or otherwise. But yeah, we'll certainly put a communication strategy around getting this thing out there.
Yeah, and Madam Warden, just to add to that, I did want to see if I wanted to leave it to the councillors to a large degree as to whether they wanted to promote this and provide clarity or not. But I think this bylaw from the county does help show solidarity with the lower-tier municipalities. If the lower-tier municipalities are also acting on this with respect to local roads, which I imagine they will be. Also, I can tell you that I've been in touch with council for Elgin County, and this is this is a they're passing a very similar bylaw. They want to do the same thing as we do, and they would like to promote solidarity together as well. So they've been in contact. I don't know about any other neighbors. So maybe I leave that to Bill to see maybe what some other neighbors are doing in this regard.
Okay, so we'll look for follow-up, and I guess just that it happened in a timely basis for communication. Okay. And I just need a mover and a seconder for this one. Councillor Vanderheiden. And a seconder, Councillor Warwick. All opposed. And that's carried. Moving on, you'll see a report from me with regards to our 2021-2024 strategic plan and the proposed implementation steps. Think the background, obviously, you were all part of it, so you're very well aware of the background that's gone into putting the report together. And it also then speaks to implementation, budget process, that sort of thing. I think at this time, I'll probably turn it over to Morgan and Cindy, since they've been the staff leads on this, to walk us through what's going to happen at the staff report at the next level. I do want to let you know that you will all be receiving a hard copy of the report, so that you can have that close at hand to act as a referral document.
Great, thanks. And through the Warden, in front of council today is the 2021-2024 strategic plan and proposed implementation steps. Given the diverse and complex business operations of the county, the current and growth projections, and other challenges such as COVID-19, now is a perfect time to move forward with this strategic focus document. Currently, council and staff were closely together to ensure the right decisions are being made, and the county is taking advantage of every opportunity to ensure the highest quality of life for the residents and businesses. However, this strategic focus document will help to ensure council and staff remain committed and aligned with the direction of council. It will also ensure we are moving forward in a calculated and deliberate way. The process started in January 2020, and in October 2020, county council approved the strategic focus. Attached is the branded document, the Middlesex Initiative: Breaking New Ground. The implementation process will include six steps. First, the draft budget presented to council in March will identify alignment with council strategic focus. Second, a council strategic planning and management discussion will be arranged for the fall of 2021 to better identify council priorities and the development of an implementation plan. Three, the implementation plan will inform the 2022 budget process. Fourth, staff reports to council will identify links to the strategic focus. A copy of a draft staff report has been included in this report. Fifth, an annual report card will be created that documents the outcomes and success and accomplishments. This document can be shared with the community and local municipalities. And six, the website will be updated in a way to better reflect and inform strategic planning and management operations of the county resulting from the strategic focus. As the Warden mentioned, printed copies of the final plan will be mailed to council in the coming weeks and will appear in a flip book or booklet. At this time, I'm recommending that the strategic plan be approved as presented. Thanks, and myself, Morgan, Bill, or the Warden are happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks for that, Cindy. All right, any questions or comments from council at this time? Councillor Vanderheiden.
Yes, thank you through the Warden. Thank you for this concise report. It's really it's really puts it all together, and I really appreciate that. A couple of things that I really like about that is, one, the links to our reports. I think it's really important for us to have those links, because that really gives us opportunity every month or every other week when we have our meetings to understand that we're still on the path and that we're looking at the strategic plan and how our work reflects that. Because if we don't do that, it's just going to be another report sitting on a filing cabinet somewhere. So I think that's really important, and I really appreciate that. I have never seen a report card put together for this, so that was really interesting read that that will be happening. And I think that that makes us accountable for the work that we said we're going to be doing. So I really appreciate that, too. So those are just two comments on this particular report.
Great, thanks for that, Councillor Vanderheiden. Certainly, I think that came loud and through loud and clear during our discussions about us wanting to make sure that that document, you know, just didn't sit on a shelf. And I think the addition of the report card, and of course, tying it into staff reports always keeps it first and foremost in our minds. It brings it to attention. So looking forward, and I am like you, I'm looking forward to that report card to see how that plays out. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, so there is a ask for a mover and a seconder to approve the recommendation to approve the strategic plan as presented. Mover and seconder for that, please. Councillor Warwick. And Councillor Ropp. All opposed. And that's carried. And then I would just like to take this time to once again thank council and staff for all the work that went into putting the strategic plan together. As you all know, that was a big priority of mine last year as Warden, and I was just so thrilled with the process, the feedback, and how engaged we all were. And I mean, when you think about how we how we were able to accomplish and put the document together virtually, I mean, it was an engaged process, and so I want to thank everybody for their efforts. Okay, report moving on from Chris Bailey, data center sub-license renewal agreement. Chris.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to council. Here today to discuss an update to the sub-license agreement that we have with the City of London. The IT department relocated the majority of our equipment that was housed at the City of London Data Center. And this resulted in a decrease to the amount of equipment and space required there. And that change resulted in an adjustment to the yearly financial impact. The remaining equipment there is required to provide internet connectivity to the county building and also provides us with access to social services, software, and websites through the City of London's network. The yearly impact of the updated agreement is $1,500 a year with a 3% increase per year. I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thanks for that, Chris. Any questions for Chris on that report? It's pretty straightforward, so if I could get a mover and a seconder for that recommendation for that agreement. Councillor Mayhew. And a seconder. Councillor Elliott. All opposed. That's carried. Okay. A report from Dirk with regards to an appeal to Southwest Middlesex Consent Application Number B-09-2020.
Thank you through the Warden to council. As you know, council has delegated the authority to grant consents to local municipal councils. And staff review those decisions against provincial and county planning policy and occasionally bring a matter before council. And it's left with council to make the decision to take that to the LPAT, Local Planning Appeal Tribunal, or not. This particular application is in Southwest Middlesex, and it's a 39-hectare property. Its lands are designated and zoned agricultural, general agricultural. And in essence, the applicant wishes to sever a 19-hectare property and retain a 20-hectare agricultural property for the purposes of succession planning. The application was provisionally granted by the municipality of Southwest Middlesex, and in accordance with our policies, in order to meet the statutory timelines, staff submit the appeal and then bring up the report before county council to look at. And in general, it was my view that the decision didn't appear to satisfy the planning policies as I laid out in the report, and I'll get into a little bit more detail. A location map, a letter to the Warden from the MFA and the local planning reporter are attached to my report also. So in terms of the policy context, the PPS, of course, as you know, is a high-level document that seeks to protect prime agricultural areas. Lot creation is permitted for agricultural uses, provided the lots are of size appropriate for the type of agricultural use that's common in the area and sufficiently large to maintain flexibility for future changes in the type or size of agricultural operations. The county's official plan contains similar wording. It does mention that fragmentation of farm holdings is discouraged. The creation of farm parcels of agricultural parcels of less than 40 hectares shall generally not be permitted. And then it does get into more detail about the 40 hectares, and it talks about the type of agriculture being engaged in or proposed to be engaged in, common farm sizes, et cetera. The Southwest Middlesex official plan, again, is more detailed, and it really puts the onus on the applicants to demonstrate that parcels are sufficiently large to constitute viable production units, may change in market conditions. It also references the 40-hectare lot size, or about 40 hectares, I should say. So in terms of my planning analysis, you know, the protection of agriculture and agricultural land are, you know, a key marker of the county's official plan. And a component of managing that agricultural resource is the avoidance of the unwarranted fragmentation of agricultural land. From a land use planning perspective, it is thought that in general, large farming practices are supported by larger farm parcels. And I've listed a few reasons operationally, greater flexibility, suitability for livestock, less expensive on a per hectare basis, and less likely to face non-farmer ownership competition. So the PPS and the county's official plan, the local official plan, provide that policy direction as I've outlined. That talks about the size of agriculture appropriate and uses that are common in the area, and seeking to maintain sufficiently large parcels for flexibility of future changes, et cetera. And it talks about it being about 40 hectares. So in support of this application, no information has been provided that addresses or demonstrates compliance with the planning policies. And as I've outlined, as I understand it, it's a number of factors were put forward in support of the application, but they are, in my opinion, non-land use planning and non-farming-related matters. So a move to a 20-hectare minimum farm parcel size would represent a significant policy change. And based on some preliminary work we've done, would substantially increase the number of potential farm sectors within the county. So based on all that above, it is my opinion that the application to create two farm parcels of approximately 20 hectares is not consistent with the PPS and the county's official plan and the local official plan, and do not represent land use planning. And of course, the decision to proceed with or withdraw the appeal does rest with council, and your two options are included as the recommendation.
Okay, thank you for that report, Dirk. Before I open it up to everyone at this point, I've got a request from Councillor Mayhew to speak to the report. So Councillor Mayhew, if you want to speak to this.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Warden. Thank you, Dirk. Southwest Middlesex Council has supported this severance by a majority of seven in favor and one. This is a very strong statement of approval from the council of Southwest Middlesex for this severance, and I respectfully ask staff of Middlesex County to be asked to withdraw the appeal of the Southwest Middlesex application as written in the planner's second recommendation. Southwest Middlesex Council have a high respect for the planning department. However, after careful consideration, we chose not to accept the planner's recommendation that was brought before council on the matter. This choice was not taken lightly. When Southwest Middlesex developed their economic development strategy, we put agriculture on the top of the list in reference to our most important industries. My council's choice in this severance matter does not diminish or take away in any way or a manner our opinion on agriculture's ranking. The reason for my council's request, the county not. The reason for my council's request, the county not proceed with an appeal to LPAT are numerous and some of which I'll attempt to explain. Following the death in a local farm family and the family care which may be necessary in the future for the survivor, estate planning matters are required. This initiated the application for severance. I assure council that the inference Dirk made in his report for a quest to save taxes is secondary to the family's emotional attachment to this farmland. The two children of the estate must be treated in an equitable manner. This is the desire of Mrs. Cruthers and was the desire of her late husband. That their children continue as a fourth generation to hold ownership of a region of Southwest Middlesex that is affectionately called Cruthers Corners. The rural areas of Southwest Middlesex are becoming sterile of human life. The comments in the report that this service would diminish the cultural elements of agriculture are not in our agreement column. Why do agricultural societies struggle to find membership? Why do the country churches that once held regional dinners and worship such as North Eckford close? Why do women's institutes abandon their charters? Why do rural education facilities have school capacity levels of 28%? And why do school buses that drive gravel roads are half empty? All of the above relates back to some degree to a sterile landscape of inhabitants on our rural roads. We are not suggesting, nor we ever would, a significant change to populations in agricultural areas. My municipal council is merely suggesting that one home on every second or third concession is not only appropriate, but beneficial to the cultural identity of rural life. Culture and rural life do not exist without humans. A sustainable agricultural footprint will remain and will continue to thrive. The lands in this application will continue to grow crop. No one has the desire to cut 50 acres of grass. It is not proposed to be a country estate, but may in the future provide a small footprint for a very modest family home. We're of the opinion that a name and a family farm provides more cultural and economic benefit to Southwest Middlesex than an agri number company that farms 2,000 acres. Efforts to keep a few smaller parcels on multi-generational occupied agricultural areas prove to be more beneficial in respect to society both socially and economically than big box farming, being void of family life. It should also be stated and drawn to the attention of every council member that no objections to this request were submitted from neighboring properties. And I'll repeat that, no objections to this request were submitted from neighboring properties. I ask Middlesex County Council to support the second recommendation of the planner in that the appeal be withdrawn. This benefits my municipality and improves and enhances rural agriculture while continuing to hold our high respect to this industry and sustainable farming. Cookie cutter planning policies struck by an influence of special interest groups are not fully aware of the intricacies of Southwest Middlesex. In the future, I believe official plans must take into consideration the benefit of a controlled number of 50 acre parcels of land in rural regions. This is a future discussion, but at the present, we have a family whose region that carries their family name have been given the confidence of Southwest Middlesex Council. It is based on the continuation of rural life for a farm family and it's council's privilege here to make the decision. Madam Warden, at the appropriate time, I move the second recommendation of the planning department that is printed on our agenda. The staff be directed to, to withdraw the appeal of the municipality of Southwest Middlesex, application B 09 2020. Thank you very much, Warden Booker.
Thank you very much for that, Counselor Mayhew. Did you want to make that motion now? We can still continue making the, we can still continue the discussion or? You're muted, Alan. Oh, no.
In the interest of fairness. In the interest of fairness, I think we should continue with discussion. I fully realize that these matters do have some controversy and I want to make sure that my colleagues have the opportunity for discussion. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Counselor Mayhew. Okay, questions or comments from council at this time? Counselor Vanderheiden.
Somebody's got to go first. So with all respect, due respect to my colleague from Southwest Middlesex, I don't agree. I believe that these rules and regulations are in place for a reason. And if we didn't have them, everything would be, I can, I can name you without even hardly thinking of at least 10 properties in my community that would love for this to happen or the community. I can say that without even, without even a problem. And this is just for succession planning. That's the only reason this is happening. And, and that's not, I believe, a valid reason to, to break the rules and regulations because once you break them, they happen over and over. This is not the first time that Southwest Middlesex had asked for this kind of opportunity. And last time it, we, council, I did not agree, but council did agree to, to move that forward. And that was about two or three years ago. This is not a discussion of large versus small, in my opinion. There's no assurances that after this happens, that down the road, one of the people that receive this property will not then decide to do something different with it. There's no assurances to that. And I'm not saying I don't believe the family, but things happen in, in, in history. So I don't know. The province says no, the county says no, your municipality says no in their official plans. And if you want to change something, in my opinion, on an official plan, you need to lobby for those changes and make that concise across the board. If you decide to fit things into the process that don't, that don't, that are incorrect and that don't fit those, then, then that's, that's not the right way to go about it. So, and I know the other way is a lot longer and a lot harder, but sometimes the rules, if they don't fit, you need to go back to why they don't fit and have that discussion, not at the point of when you want something to move into that direction. I appreciate that your council approves this and I agree that, you know, rural life is culture. I totally, totally agree with that. But this is breaking rules that go all the way from the top right down to the community that you live in. And I don't, I don't, I will not agree to accepting that because preservation of agricultural land is important. And, and you know, this particular one is, is in my opinion, just about succession planning, not about following the rules and regulations. So that's just my comments and that's why I vote no.
Hey, Counselor Rock.
Thank you, Warden. Through the Warden, as much as I don't like to interfere with lower tiers making their decisions on their communities. I have to agree with Counselor Vanderheiden on this. This is strictly succession planning. And I do agree that I have already heard from a couple of residents in North Middlesex as well, who would put that same application towards us going in the future if we pass this. And with the rules in place, the way they are, I agree that the way to change this, if we decide to want to do that is through the policies and working on that way. But at this point, I can't support it as well.
Counselor Elliott and then Counselor DeVet.
I think you went through the Warden. I agree with, I spoke with Deputy Mayor Wilkins as well as Counselor Cowell in Southwest Middlesex. And I think the reasons for supporting this application, the way they did, were absolutely valid. I think there is a place for smaller farmer operations here in southwestern Ontario. And even when we were doing our economic development strategic plan, we talked about smaller farm operations and diversifying and farm gate operations that don't require a large 100 acre parcels. So I do agree that there is a spot for, for these and, and that is something that Middlesex County should look at and, and look at a policy that would reflect the economic development strategic, strategic plan that we pass. That being said, I don't agree with one offs. I think there needs to be a policy in place. Right now, we do have policies in place and those are the official plans that we have as well as the provincial policy statement. So I wouldn't, as much as I agree with, with why Southwest Middlesex supported this, I can't support it here at the county level. Just being that we don't have those policies in place. That being said, whatever way the county goes, I think we do need to open up that discussion on our official plan and how we support smaller farm operations.
Thanks, Counselor Elliott. Counselor DeVet.
Thank you through you to council. I don't want to belabor the point. My only comment would, to further the discussion is that once a precedent is set for a particular reason, that reason doesn't always follow the, the precedent itself. So to the comment that Counselor Rock made about interest in his community and Counselor Vanderheiden mentioned in their community is also true for ours. The, the reason of supporting smaller farms is different than succession planning. Once it happens for succession planning or smaller farms, then that argument will be raised in every municipality. If we are going to make change, then we need to make it formally through a process and it needs to be codified. And then we know what rules we're using to implement change down the road. One off decisions usually have repercussions beyond those that are anticipated. And I think if we want to go this way, then that conversation has to happen as Counselor Elliott has described. And we need to have a formal way of addressing a checklist of saying, are the conditions met? How do we prevent change from building a big house on say a small farm property than in, you know, a matter of months or, or whatever? That whole process can be figured out. This isn't a case where the rules can be somehow changed for me. Succession planning is not the same as good land planning. So I would have to agree that to withdraw the appeal, to withdraw the appeal is not an option in this instance.
Counselor Smith.
Yes, through the Warden, listening to all the comments and thinking about this over the last while, I, I understand the, the feeling of councils to continue on with the appeal. And I, I, I fully understand that from a policy standpoint. I think, looking ahead, I have a very similar view of Counselor Elliott, that we should be looking at this as a bigger picture and looking at our policies. It has been some time since we have done this review and, and the matter is, you know, saying that it's going against what our official plan is saying. Those rules were put in place some time ago. In the provincial policy statement, there isn't anything saying what the actual minimum size is. We as county council, we are the ones that decide what that minimum size is. And then that goes to the words, the lower tiers as well. So understanding that most likely after hearing a number of county councillors speak, most likely will continue on with that appeal. I still would like to see that we do a, a review of that policy because when we look forward to the next generation of farming and what's going on. It's going to be harder and harder for new individuals in the next generation to purchase farms of the size of say 100 acres. Looking forward down the line, we've heard a lot about vertical farming and the, the need for, or the ability to have smaller farm parcels. I could go on and on and on about that, but that's really not what we're talking about today. That's the bigger picture of what the policies are. But if, if council was to withdraw the appeal, I would also like to see in that motion that we have the review of the farm parcel and doing that review of that 40 hectares and seeing what that would be reduced to.
Okay, Counselor Warwick.
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. You know, we get into these situations and I know we're elected to make tough decisions and, and I'm not scared to make a tough decision. But I also, I also want to say that my dream job would never be a planner because they're always into the, into it and it, and it tends to be looked at as a personal thing where it needs to be looked at as a position. Like in our actual plan, you know, the term generally is, is such a hard one to read. When you go through all those things and it's generally this and generally that, you know, that gives you an idea as a lower tier, that, that doesn't always mean that it's black and white. And there's always that room for, for, for changing. And then you read statements like, remain sufficiently large to ensure flexibility and economic viability of the farm operation. Well, that's great, but what kind of farm operation? My neighbors here that run a mushroom farm are going to run very different farm operations as someone has 2,000 acres in beans. I live on a 50 acre property. It's a farm. I mean, they're all over the place and I just don't know if the policy really directs us well enough. And I know it's a hot issue with MFA. I've seen the letters. I've heard the calls. And, and it's hard, you know, on one hand, our economic statements forecast, as Counselor Smith said, vertical farming, for an example, organic farming. But that doesn't happen on 2,000 acres. That needs that small farm property. And I don't really want to talk about succession planning. I just wondered about some of the things that were stated in the letters that we got where it says, you know, existing livestock poultry operations were affected. Well, I don't think there's any livestock operations nearby. And, and as a council, we get those kinds of applications all the time when we have to do a variance on, on a, on a distance. So I, I know that each site is looked at and, and considered carefully by their own lower tier council. So I, I would have to agree with Counselor Smith. I think that, again, we're left hanging. We're, we're sitting here with not much direction of policy and and then I've looked at the Ontario policy before and different things. And I just, I would rather have a better definition so that we could make better decisions.
Hey, any other questions or comments, clarifications from any other members of council? Counselor Mayhew.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. First of all, I know that there's various opinions around the table on this issue and I want to assure all councillors that I hold everyone in high respect and whatever decision this council makes, at the end of the day, that's the decision that I will support, the decision that county council made. That being said, I think this word succession planning is perhaps being overused. The words that I gave you a few minutes ago, the focus of those words were on the history of that community, the history of that family. The word succession planning was used. But this is not an issue of dollar signs. That is on the bottom of the list. It's merely the circumstances that are involved. We there, as, as was mentioned, there are no livestock operations around this. And also there is a, a large municipal drain that cuts a triangular piece off that farm to a very, very large degree. And I don't believe there's any crossings on that municipal drain. But we did examine policy as a council prior to our meeting. We looked at it. We looked at the planning report. We looked at the environment. I think all councillors went out and drove by the premise and looked and I use the word cookie cutter. I think what we're, we're asking for is that it's not a one size fits all. And that's what our planning policies presently are. And my, my concern about deferring it until we have a study, which is mandatory, we must look at this. But we all know that planning policies, particularly on the provincial end, move at glacial speed. And the circumstances that exist with this application, they don't have the benefit of glacial speed. They're not going to live that long. Thank you. But I want to thank council for the discussion and I'm fully aware of the sensitivity of the subject. But I want all council to feel comfortable that all remarks are respected. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you, Counselor Mayhew. Okay, any other comments from council? Counselor Vanderheiden.
Just, just one more. And you know, I, I hear everybody speaking and, and I, I agree. I've always said that for almost every issue, cookie cutter doesn't work for every issue. But this is not just about cookie cutter. This is about policies that are set at three different levels of government. And if we want to make those changes, then we go ahead and we start looking at how to make those changes. If we're going to fit all of our thoughts and processes into, even, even the Southwest Middlesex official plan doesn't agree with this. So it's not, it's, it's, I, I think we're doing the wrong thing and setting up a really slippery slope if we start saying yes to situations like this. Yes to situations like this because we could all make situations like this happen. And, and this is not the right time to do that. I, I, I'm hopeful that, that something can still be accomplished, but in a proper way and not by. Neglecting the, the rules that we set in place in order to protect our agricultural. Lands and I, I, that's the strongest I can say it. I, I, I really wish that, that the, um, report had been more, um. Succinct in the option, instead of giving us options, saying this is what our policy says, so this is what we should do. Because I, I really believe that we actually. When we're given all these options, when they're not the proper options, that's, that's not a good thing either, but that's, that's another whole other story, but. That's my thought.
Okay, one last call for, uh, comments from council. Okay, so at this time I would entertain a motion, um, one way or, or the other for one of the recommendations. Councillor Mayhew.
Uh, I've moved the, the planners, a second room, uh, recommendation be adopted that the, uh, application, uh, be withdrawn from, uh. It's a journey to Elphat.
So the motion would be that staff be directed to withdraw the appeal of the municipality of Southwest Middlesex application. B dash zero nine dash twenty twenty. Moved by councillor Mayhew, a seconder for that. Uh, councillor Warwick. Any further comment or question from council? Councillor Smith.
Uh, through the warden, I would be in support of that if we, if the mover and seconder would be willing to add on that. Uh, planning staff be directed to review the policies of the official plan, uh, for the county of Middlesex. Agricultural policy, uh, parcel size. Cause without that, then we would be fully going against what our policies state. Um, and furthermore, I just want to say that. We are the, the body that would be looking at that. The provincial policy statement does not say the size of property. That is needed for the agricultural area. So the. Us, uh, around the council horseshoe, we're the ones that would do, need to decide whether or not we'd like to stick with the forty hectares or change that. And the reason why the southwest middlesex official plan and all of our official plans also say forty hectares is because we can't go larger. Then what the official plan says at the county and that is why also southwest middlesex is also not in conformity with their decision.
Okay, so councillor Mayhew and councillor Warwick, are you. Open to making that amendment to your motion?
By all means, uh, madam warden and thank you, uh, um, past warden Curtis. Uh, providing, uh, Allison, uh, would agree, uh, with no pressure on her, I would accept that, uh, friendly amendment.
I would agree with a friendly amendment.
Okay, councillor Vanderheiden.
I want to ask you for something that's not very popular at this particular point, but I think this is, uh, important enough that we need to do this today and that would be have a recorded weighted vote.
Okay, so you want a weighted vote or a recorded vote?
Both.
Okay.
And I only say that because of the importance of this particular issue and, and moving forward.
All right, Kathy, do you have that information in front of you?
I do.
Um, do you want to go over the process? I think this is the first time this particular council has gone through that.
Okay, so with a recorded weighted vote, so weighted vote, each municipality or each member of council. Has a certain number of votes due to the number of electors. I can tell you what each one is if you want. Um, or we can just go through it and, and then it's recorded in the minutes as to who voted which way. How would you like to?
Um, you, you might as well review what, I guess, what the weight is.
Okay, so it's a total of fifty seven votes. Uh, councillor Brennan has six. You have four. Councillor Cornellison has two. Councillor DeBeet has six. Councillor Elliot has five. Councillor Mayhew has five. Councillor Richards has eight. Councillor Ropp has three. Councillor Smith has three. Councillor Vanderheiden has nine and councillor Warwick has five. So I would ask for yea or nay and then we would total them up.
Okay.
Okay, so can we say what we're saying yea or nay to so everybody's clear because the, the, that, that needs to be very, very clear?
Okay.
So we're asking for. That staff be directed to withdraw the appeal of the municipality of Southwest Middlesex application B zero nine twenty twenty. And that staff, planning staff be directed to review the size of agricultural properties in the county official plan. Does that? Sufficient?
So if I say nay, I'm voting against that.
Yes, that's correct. Everyone's clear?
Clear, just, I guess, looking for a little nod aheads. I think everybody's good on it. Okay.
I will do it in alphabetical order. Councillor Brennan, yea or nay?
Nay.
Nay. Councillor Burkhardt.
Nay.
Yeah, we got it. Thanks, John. We got that.
Warden Burkhardt.
Nay.
Councillor Cornellison.
Nay.
Councillor DeBeet.
Nay.
Councillor Elliot.
Nay.
Councillor Mayhew.
Yes.
Councillor Richards.
Nay.
Councillor Ropp.
Nay.
Councillor Smith.
Yea.
Sorry?
Yes.
Yay? Want to be clear. Councillor Vanderheiden.
Nay.
And councillor Warwick.
Yes.
So. That motion is lost. By a vote of. Forty-four to thirty thirteen. For the recorded vote.
Okay, thanks for that, Kathy. Councillor DeBeet.
Um, at what point can we make the motion then to approve the investigation of policies as they relate to, um. Well, the points that councillor Cur- um, Curtis Smith was making and that councillor Elliot spoke to and councillor Warwick. If that's appropriate, I would make that motion now.
Um, so we still need to decide, we voted against it, so we still need to say we're gonna go forward if that's what council is deciding. So we should have a motion to that effect.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, okay, yes. Also, the first of all, you want, um, direct staff to proceed with the appeal and then you will entertain a motion with respect to having investigation.
Yeah, well, we can add that to your motion.
Okay, I would recommend that we do that then. We will recommend that staff pursue the appeal and that we proceed with a review. I'll make the motion then for a joint, uh, motion for those two ideas then.
Yes, so to approve the appeal, um, and then the wording that was used for, uh, councillor Smith's amendment to the. The first one, we can just add that one, okay? So moving, councillor DeBeet, seconded, um, councillor Elliot. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, all opposed. And that one is carried. So before we leave this, I guess my question would be, um.
Fourteen hours.
Um, maybe just on the next steps as to, I mean, obviously this isn't going to happen overnight. Um, what a review of policy would be, um, but maybe Dirk, you might have some. A few thoughts just off the top of your head. I, I get a sense in, in listening to the comments from council that, um. It is something that I think we want to, to move forward on and not lose sight of. So I guess your thoughts on maybe what a timeline or what, what, how you see that being taken on. And I know it's a lot to just ask you off the top of your head, but just, you know.
Well, well, it, it is, it is, it is on our radar, uh, already. We're, uh, you know, we know that coming out of the, the strat plan. Uh, both council strat plan and economic development strat plan and then just our, our actual OP review and then the changing PPS. Uh, provincial policy statement late last year, that it is timely to revisit the county's official plan. So we've already begun that work in-house, but we haven't sort of, uh. Moved it forward in a, in a comprehensive way through that public process. So I think over the next six months, uh, absolutely, we need to, we can study this further and. Uh, we will be looking, Lantern County, um, tackled this issue. Others have too, but Lantern County was the most recent, uh, that sort of has done a study on this. And so, um, I do have one of our planners is looking at Lantern and, and how that could be applied, that same methodology could be applied. Uh, to middlesex, um, with some differences, so.
Okay, that's great. Thanks very much, Dirk. Okay, moving on, councillor comments, other business. Um, councillor Vanderheiden.
Thank you, madam warden. Now, we hadn't discussed this, but I wonder if, um, either you or, or Kelly or Allison want to give an update on the women's caucus and where we're moving forward to, so everyone. Or Ina, um, whoever, uh, knows what, so everyone knows where we're headed with this because I think it's really exciting for all of us as a council to know that we're working hard for this municipality.
Um, yeah, I, I, maybe I will, I'll get, um, councillor DeBeet and councillor Elliot to kind of split it up. Councillor DeBeet can maybe just give us a little. Overview of the session that we had, we had last weekend and then councillor Elliot can talk about our upcoming event. Um, and we will look forward to presenting a more, um. A formal, uh, report of council in, in February, but councillor DeBeet, did you want to just talk about, uh, our, our meeting that we had on the weekend?
Uh, certainly, warden, through you to council, um. The, the caucus got together because, uh, we'd already had experience with a number of sort of, uh, conversations, venues and events. And we thought it would be a good time to debrief and understand. Exactly what we've been hearing, how that might be classified into different sort of cat- categories. And then also to use that information then to make sure that we know what directions we want to go in and, um, how we might prioritize those. So, um, I'm, I'm kind of loathe to use the word strategic plan. It wasn't that formal. But in essence, that was the purpose of that conversation, to make sure that we are on the same page and we know. What kinds of issues and projects we can take on and how we might, um, how we might move those things forward. Um, I, I don't have the document in front of me, uh. Largely, we didn't have any surprises. Uh, we knew that there were economic implications to COVID that were, um, particularly felt amongst, um. Women and, uh, may- maybe in particular women with children and those who were taking care of, um, elder, elderly parents or relatives. Um, so understanding how, what those pressures are, what resources those people need and how they might be, um, aided. Was one of the great, the big, big chunks that we, uh, talked about. Um, another big one might be. Um, this, this past year was the fiftieth anniversary of the Status of Women's Report. And there was a lot of content in that report, uh, that was discussed with one of the, um, in one of the sessions that we attended with the Lieutenant Governor General of Ontario. Um, it was clear that while progress has happened in the last fifty years. There are a lot of things that maybe are really quite obvious that haven't been touched on and we thought that. We're not going to reinvent the wheel or anything. What we thought we could do is make sure that we look at that content. And say, where can we make a difference? How, how can we add, um, to that conversation and move things forward? So, um. That's a really high level overview with very little detail. Uh, does that meet, yeah, I see the nod, warden nodding, so I'll stop there then and. Um, as the warden said, we'll be presenting more formal content to council for comment and review.
Councillor Elliot, did you want to talk about our upcoming event we've got?
Uh, sure, through you, the warden. Uh, on, uh, Thursday, February the fourth, we are hosting another webinar for women across, uh, Middlesex County. Uh, we found in our last webinar as well as when we did follow-up emails to all the women who attended our, our. Webinar that mental health is, uh, a big concern amongst women. Uh, so we are hosting an event called How Are You Doing? It is going to be a fireside chat. Uh, for women just to come on, uh, chat about their experiences that they're having, how they're feeling through this COVID pandemic as well as we have. As, uh, therapist Holly McDonald, uh, joining us. That's going to provide, um, some coping mechanisms as well as, uh, do a little presentation. Uh, with how women can, uh, make it through this pandemic. So that is being advertised. Uh, through the women that attended our last webinar, uh, on social media as well as the Small Business Centre had also, uh, done an email blast for us as well.
Great, thank you for that. And we do have a, we're, do have a delegation at the upcoming, uh, Roma Conference next week with Jill Dunlop, so we're excited to introduce ourselves to her. Any other comments? Other business? Okay, moving into the committee of the whole, we have our first report from Bill with regards, uh, to the. Use of proceeds from some property sale.
Can we, uh, defer the bylaws?
Oh, sorry. Yep, sorry, I skipped over that. Sorry, sorry. Um, just a motion to defer the bylaws to the end of the meeting, a mover and seconder for that. Uh, councillor Smith and councillor DeBeet. All opposed? No, it's carried. Okay. Moving into the committee of the whole, Bill, for your report.
How does that look, madam warden?
Good.
Okay, um, thank you for this opportunity to talk about use of proceeds today. It's, uh, been a long time coming, as I think everybody knows and I. I'm glad we're finally here to have this important conversation. I want today to be a, um, a discussion, not, um, a written in stone, here's what exactly it is we're going to do. Um, unless, uh, we're all on the same page, but, um, I really just want to have, I put these discussion points together. Um, I wanted to make sure everybody knew where the source of the funds came from, um, our funds timing. The, I want to talk a little bit about the fact that we lost revenue in this process and, um, that we have new expenditures we have to consider as well. And then finding the right balance is going to be really important and then talk about. Recommendations going forward. So, um, I want to thank Alan and, uh, I assume Linda for, uh, this Christmas present that arrived at my door just before Christmas. Um, hit something that I've been worrying proudly and, um, and, uh, I think it's a statement that Alan said to me a number of times. Uh, since we very first started talking about the use of proceeds or about even, um, selling properties. And, uh, I thought it was apt to put it here because it, it truly is, um, something that we give consideration to and, and think about all the time at council and. Also as staff. Um, so I won't break the county dress code by wearing it today, but that is, um, a greatly appreciated, Alan. In terms of the source of funds, um, as you know, thirty million dollars, uh, is from the three nine nine rideout and fifty King Street property sale. Three different payments, uh, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-five make up that thirty million dollars. And then as well, we have a, a pending sale of Strathmere lands that is, um, we're hoping we'll get concluded in mid-February. And we wanted to contemplate that in here as well because, uh, we think that's important to consider in terms of. The total use of funds, um, that are available to us of six million dollars, likely one payment in twenty twenty-one. So, um, a feather in our cap really is that we had a double benefit. Um, as many of you know, and this is more for the public, but as council knows, we hit peak market conditions for both properties. Certainly on the commercial side, we did very well in terms of our timing. Um, for the fifty King and three nine nine Rideout Street properties. But also the Strathmere lands, um, there was a very high demand for, uh, vacant land, uh, for residential, um, development. And there was very little land left in the county, especially in that Strathroy area. I think it's one of the last remaining parcels available. On the west side of the property. Uh, sorry, on the west part of town. And, um, so we managed to hit peak market conditions in, in, for both properties and exceeded our. Um, appraised value significantly in both, in both sales. Um, but more importantly, I think the sales support our long-term decentralization strategy. I think it's been eight or nine years of being working on decentralization. And getting right sized at the county of Middlesex is something that we've been working on as a team for a long time. And both of these. And both of these sales uh, support that. And and speaking of decentralization, there's been a lot of things that have been happening. Um, certainly the central garage renovation, garage renovation, I think I say garage wrong. I think I say it Northern Ontario slang, but anyways, I think you know what I mean. The central garage is really an important project to the decentralization. It's going to provide some options for hoteling of of staff whenever they're moving through the county and delivering services. And we're looking forward to showing you that work in in mid-February to late February. That project's on time, on budget. And um, we're excited about the work that's happening there as part of our decentralized project. Repurposing library office is another part of the of the big picture and figuring how we can deliver social services and and what we're doing with the work with the our co-project with the Town of Strathroy and Caradoc is really important for the Strathroy Library. And um, that is going to really allow us to have a smaller footprint at the county building going forward as well. And naturally, the remote work initiative that we had started well before the pandemic, but then hit hyperspeed whenever March 16th came around um, has been really valuable as well because it's proven our theory that many of our employees can work from home. Um, and some are equally productive, if not more productive, working from home. And so we're constantly analyzing the size of our footprint in our footprint review, what it needs to be. I can tell you that our footprint is going to be very, very small going forward in the county building because of the work of the decentralization project. We did lose revenue and I just want to remind people of that. Of course, we were leasing 50 King and there is an annual financial impact of that. And our strategy really is to invest money to replace that impact, so it lessens the impact upon the taxpayer. But um, there was a significant amount of lease revenue that went whenever the health unit uh, moved. And so part of what we're recommending here today is that we um, address those losses by putting in place investments to help provide that steady income to uh, offset that annual financial impact. Um, we also have a new facility investment we have to consider. As I mentioned, I'm I'm predicting a much smaller footprint than the size of 399 Rideout Street. Uh, whenever we get through our our five-year uh, lease with the with the new owner. Uh, but we are going to have a much smaller footprint. And I think there's ways we can leverage existing infrastructure and we can decide whether we want to lease our own. We're, we're in the process of finalizing what our footprint is going to look like at the end of our lease term. And and making sure that we get that information to council and then we'll be in a position to talk about um, what a new facility might look like. We have lots of time to figure that out, but we don't want to leave it too late either. And so we are making recommendations about in each of the different years about putting money away for that type of new facility investment. Uh, I love talking about investing in tax relief. The Warden will tell you, I bore her with this all the time. Um, because I really do believe this is one of the major economic stimuli that we can provide uh, coming out of the pandemic, but with that, we've been providing for 20 years. Um, when you look at our tax rates, they're extremely low compared to our full-service county neighbors. Um, in Middlesex, our residential tax rate is point 00391. And here on it's point 00457, that's 15% higher. And these are 2020 numbers. And in Elgin, it's point 00607, that's 36% higher. Already, that's a lot of money that we're leaving um, in the pockets of our residents. Um, and we are not doing a a good enough job of advertising how much lower our tax rate is compared to our nearest comparators of full-service counties. Um, many of you have talked to me about communication strategy, but part of what we're going to have to do coming out of this pandemic and 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 Kara's work in economic stimulus is our, is make sure people know, we're already seeing a massive influx of investment into this. You just asked, I mean, the last planning report told you that. Um, but every day we're seeing massive influx of investment into Middlesex County. And I'm a strong believer that it's um, our low tax rate is going to be a massive competitive advantage. That's the gift that keeps on giving for commercial and industrial and residential um, going forward that we have to brag about. We're also in a very strong financial position um, that was built on decades of prudent financial governance and strategy. Kudos to council over the past 20 years. Um, we have a very, we've had a very fiscally conservative council, in my view, for not very fiscally conservative, but fiscally conservative council uh, during my time here. And every dollar has been spent in a way that um, puts us in a very strong financial position. And we planned ahead for days like this, whenever you are dealing with multiple impacts from uh, global pandemic. So we're in a really great shape to provide more tax relief, I think, going forward. And um, as I mentioned, I think this is an important stimulant we can provide. And um, it will be an important factor in allowing us to continue our growth going forward. I've also talked a little bit about our infrastructure investment fund. I think everybody knows where this came from. It started with annexation compensation. In fact, it was the very first report I was asked to write for county council. They said, um, Bill, come up with a strategy on how we're going to deal with this $10 million that we suddenly have. And there were all kinds of ideas around the county council table, from cutting it up and equally dividing amongst municipalities of the day to um, lowering the tax rate to a variety of different ideas. Um, what I ended up recommendate, recommending and what got approved was uh, an effort, a formula that would replace lost assessment. And really, the infrastructure investment fund was designed to replace the assessment that we lost in the annexation process. And it's done that in spades and really allowed us to surpass that loss. This program has, is a replenishable program. It doesn't, it it's still sitting at, I think it's just a little under 10 million now, Cindy. Somewhere in that um, little north of $9 million still in that infrastructure investment fund. And we consistently review it to make sure that it's strong and that it's healthy, so that it can support new growth and infrastructure in the county that then will um, create new assessment for us and put us in even stronger position. So I'd ask you to think lots about that infrastructure investment fund because that really is investing in our communities. Um, Alan was talking earlier in the planning discussion about how important growth is to our rural and smaller urban communities. And he's absolutely right, it is. And that's going to require that we spend, that we help with uh, putting that infrastructure in place. And it's also very timely, the infrastructure investment fund, because what it allows us to do is it allows us to participate in any triple P, triple um, one-third, one-third, one-third options that may come from the federal and provincial government as stimulus coming out of um, the pandemic. So uh, that is a very important component of why we've been successful and I'm recommending we we um, move forward even further with it. So how do you find the right balance? I I broke this down into um, a couple of different categories, tax relief. Um, Curtis very gently reminded me that I had my numbers wrong, but this should add up to 36 million now, Curtis, I think. Um, and in my first draft, it it didn't, but it does now. Um, with $11 million going to tax relief, another $11 million adding on to our existing 10 to grow our communities through the infrastructure fund, 8 million to replace the lost revenue and 6 million to do new facility investment. The 2020 allocation I'm recommending as a discussion point is to put $6 million into revenue replacement investment. So we're getting right into that interest, uh, getting that investment opportunity back to replace those dollars, because those dollars are now gone. And so I need to replace them as early as possible in the process. So of the 13 million that we have sitting in the bank, uh, we think that that revenue replacement investment of 6 million is the right place to start. Uh, putting an additional $3 million in the infrastructure fund, I've been promoting to the local CAOs. Um, let's get our big projects going. Let's start stimulating the economy. Let's start thinking about what growth looks like. And I really want to have enough money in there to support that that growth. And putting $3 million towards that this year would be a strong signal that we're going to be there for them. And then in $4 million in tax rate stabilization. This will give us a major competitive advantage in turbulent times. We're going to see wild fluctuations, I think, in tax rates. I think we're in really good shape in Middlesex County to to stabilize our tax rate or decrease our tax rate as we go in to this year. Uh, I want to see that we are continuing our competitive advantage and advancing it um, in 2020. And so that's why I recommended we put some money towards tax rate stabilization. And as we move into 2021, we'll have an additional $8 million that are uh, that will be available to us. And that again is dis distributed almost equally um, through the group. I I did put a million dollars and you'll see that I didn't put anything in 2020's money towards new facility investment. I put a million dollars towards new facility investment to get our work going and to get the process started. And then um, that was it. That's probably more than we need to get moving and to figure things out as a council. Um, but I, that's the first allocation is uh, later this year in 2021. And then moving to 2025, when the bulk of the money, um, remaining money comes in um, equally distributed amongst that group, by then the infrastructure fund will need another boost and so will the tax rate stabilization fund. And having $5 million to help with the facility investment, I think will go a long way. Um, facility investment, we're not sure how much we're going to need now, but this is great starter for it. And um, I think that's probably more than we'll need based upon the footprint we're talking about, but it depends on what council decides to do. So those are the place we'll do that it put in place. I'll stop now, Warden, and just see if there's any questions. But as I mentioned, this is really designed to be an open discussion, nothing written in stone. And looking forward to hearing the comments.
Thank you very much for that, Bill. Um, thanks. Um, okay, open up for discussion, comments on the presentation and what you've heard. Uh, councillor Rock.
I'll, I'll start with one question. Uh, first question I had, Bill, was uh, what is the amount of lost income we have per year with this sale?
Uh, sorry, so we're just talking about, so I'll send that out to you to council, Brian. It's um, it'll be our revenue minus our expenses. And I'll actually ask Cindy to send it out to you. She's got it there. And so she'll send it out to you. But we, the, the general answer is that we think that uh, that the investment that we'd be making um, that I showed you for lost replacement should come very close to helping us match those funding, that that lost fund, that lost amount. Of course, that's at the whim of, we don't have the same investment vehicles available to us that uh, you do as a private individual. And so it really is interest rate dependent. And um, we that, we don't know for how long that will be the right amount. It might, you know, those rates might go lower, but I think this is a good start at least in replacing that revenue and and gets us going.
Okay. And just a comment to that, I really do like to see us uh, add money to the infrastructure fund. I think that's a great fund. It's worked very well. I'm very much in support of that. I'll leave it for the next person.
Thank you, councillor Rock. Any other comments on report as presented? Councillor Vanderheiden.
Yes, thank you through the Warden. Um, I really, really am glad we have uh, the infrastructure fund investment. Uh, we, I was around when that was started as well. So we've been working this this fund for a lot of years. And uh, every single community has benefited from this, every single one. And this is what this, that that was supposed to be for. Now, if we would have just split up the funds and given everybody a million bucks here and a million bucks there, that money would have been gone. And we would have probably used it for something really good in the beginning. But this way, it rotated the money over and over. And I think that that, I I cannot stress enough how important that was and how successful that was for each and every one of our communities. Um, the tax relief stabilization fund, I I think that's, that's a good um, place to to park some of the money. Uh, and I think that it's really good that you said this is not set in stone, because we need to revisit this every year with our budgets to find out where we're at. And whether it is um, still the best place for it, or whether that's something that we need to revisit. Uh, growing our communities, we all know that's important. Replacing the lost revenue, I had the same question, whether, you know, revenue minus expenses, what exactly is that number? So we know that that's a true number, so we know where we're moving forward with that. So those are my three comments on those three issues. And uh, um, this is something that we'll have to, uh, things will come up in the future and and things will happen that we will say um, what was the best use of this money and and um, what what uh, what did we do with it? And and um, I think councillor Mayhew made that great statement that, you know, we will be judged for what happens to this money. Because uh, if two years from now we say we're broke, and then we all should be fired.
Any other comments?
Just wanted to comment quickly on something um, Joanne said. Uh, it was in regard to the infrastructure investment fund. One of the things that I've uh, talked to the local CAOs about is I want their feedback on how we can make changes to that fund. And I also want council's ideas, because we've got to get more of that money out the door and your priorities are changing. So for example, um, well, Barry's going to talk in the near future too. So I'll just use um, broadband as an example. Um, a local municipality, let's say Lucan, may not feel the same need to make huge investments in broadband as another municipality like Thames Centre, for example. And so Thames Centre may come up with a solution for Last Mile or for expanding broadband in their community. And would that be an appropriate use of that infrastructure fund? Maybe. We need to talk about what the needs are of the communities going forward that give you a competitive advantage to build assessment. Because it's not always about pipes in the ground. It can be about other types of infrastructure. It could be um, libraries, as we know, it could be public works, grazes, it could be arenas, it could be all kinds of different things. And so I want to sit down with council and with our local CAOs and really have a good reevaluation of the criteria to make sure that that fund is humming. And I'm thinking we're going to do that um, in February at our last meeting in February.
Uh, follow-up, Joanne, councillor Vanderheiden.
Yes, please. Thank you through the Warden. And Bill, I think that's really, really good, because the, the, we have made a couple of changes in that fund along the years. Uh, the first, the first time we used it, we had different criteria. Then I think about 10 years later, we made different criteria because of the needs and and the way that the, I, everybody can have so many loans up to so much, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's really important, and this is probably the optimal time for us to revisit that and find out what the criteria ought to be, so that we all are successful.
Any other comments for the report that was presented? Okay, all right. Well, thanks for that, Bill. A lot of work went into that. And uh, we'll certainly look forward to the discussions as they progress. It's a good problem to have to figure out where to invest our money. Moving on to action items, um, there is a report from Chris with regards to uh, traffic signals on Middlesex County roads. Um, we were hoping Ryan was going to be able to um, join us, but unfortunately, he's not. Um, I don't know if there's any questions or comments. It is a pretty straightforward report. Councillor Cornealson.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I did have a question on the location of the traffic control light at the corner of Elgafield and Main Street and Park Hill, 81 Highway. And I'm just curious as to why that location was selected as opposed to downtown, where it would better serve the communities, particularly pedestrian traffic, given that the majority of the traffic uh, in the summertime is uh, coming from London and turning right or turning left out of, out of town to go back to London. And there's limited traffic coming from the west. I'd, I'd just like to have a better understanding of the rationale for locating it there.
Uh, Bill.
Well, I for one, I'm not willing to give that rationale, because I'm not uh, the engineer. So I was, I'm not even going to try, Adrian. What I'm going to tell you is that if you um, that will get you the answer and um, will get you it in a timely way. Uh, and if you want to defer this, I don't think there's any trouble doing that, Warden, um, until he gets that answer. Um, or we can move forward with it and get him an answer, get everyone an answer on that question in the future, one or the other.
Certainly, I I think it, I think uh, it, there's no reason why it can't be deferred, because it is a uh, budget discussion which we're going through. So um, it's not like the decision has to be made for tomorrow. Um, councillor Vanderheiden.
I said, to that point, if we're going to have a discussion down the road, I would, uh, I think this time councillor Mayhew and I will be agreeing. I would like to have a conversation, a fulsome conversation on, if not a light, what then? Is there another option? We, we've been having issues with specific corners and we seem to not really have a, a policy or an agreement as to what would be best for those corners. And and I really think we need to have that conversation in a fulsome way and not, not uh, so we, so we understand what the rationale is for yes or no, whether there's new technology out there that that would work better. I know other communities are using new technologies such as lights that that have um, that that have lights on, like stoplights that have lights attached to them. So so what are the other options? Because we have these corners that maybe don't meet what we have as criteria for a light. But there's still issues at those corners. So what other options do we have? So I'd like to see that in a report as well.
Okay. Did you want to? Did you want to see that in a report when we bring this back? So, okay, okay. Maybe that could be part of the deferral motion then, when it comes time. Councillor Elliott.
Hi, yes, I threw you the warden. Um another one I would like to discuss further and I'll and I will follow up with our roads department though is um the Dundas Street and Nysary Road one. Uh that one has been on our radar for uh the last five or six years. Um and I know that in the report, uh they refer to uh the long wait times for uh turning left, um as well as that there isn't the high traffic volume. Um but because of those long um long wait times, people are now turning to Fairview Road and using Fairview Road, one of our local roads, um as an easier turn point onto Nysary Road. And so we're taking traffic off of a county road onto a local road uh because of that. And so I think that's one um that we need to put uh additional conversation into.
Thank you.
Man, I picked the wrong day to try and be the county engineer.
Um councillor Mayhew. Oh, you're muted, Alan.
Madam, thank you, Madam Warden. Uh further to the councillor Vanderheiden's comments, uh we live in a very noisy world and uh I think uh uh the pro, I've mentioned it before, it's not that our roads aren't safe, that we have to uh give some communication to unattentive drivers. And uh this noisy world we live in, I think it takes more than the sound of payments, pavement, more than the sound of pavement to alert a driver. And uh I know the technology is out there with uh uh soft, inexpensive LED lighting uh that's non flashing, it's just a consistent light uh that that catches attention of people. And uh I don't think we're taking advantage of uh some of the technology that's out there. And I would certainly like that to be part of the future discussion on some of these problematic intersections. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Any other comments? Okay, and entertain a motion to defer. Um councillor Vanderheiden, I I guess I'm putting the pressure on you since you wanted to include the uh report.
If if that's possible, um at at either that report or or in the very, very near future that we get a report on the other issues that we're talking about. Um councillor Elliot's um issue, which is the traffic light and councillor Mayhew and my discussion about uh what are the, if not that, then what?
Can I get a second or for that, please? Councillor Mayhew. And all opposed. And that's carried. Okay, another report from Chris Bailey with regards to electronic agenda management.
Thank you, Warden, through you to council. I'm gonna give you a brief background on the kind of history of e agenda and then just discuss a change that the IT department has been discussing with the clerk Cathy. Uh in 2014, we underwent a procurement process to find a new electronic meeting management system. Um that process resulted in the development of e agenda. Uh over the course of the past six years, e agenda has provided the county and many of our local municipalities with an agenda management system. Um in 2018, the county purchased e agenda. At that time, it was determined in its current form without any significant investment, uh it would be able to be leveraged for the next two to three years. Um at at this point, it's been determined with the features and things that we're looking for without significant investment as mentioned before. E agenda's pretty much reached the end of its useful life. Um from an analysis perspective, after reviewing the current state of e agenda, um one of the results of the digital transformation top 10 project as well was um council committee meetings and agenda management being a priority. Uh the IT department worked with the clerk to review available electronic agenda management systems. Um we received three quotes to ensure compliance with the Middlesex County purchasing policy. Um the legal department also reviewed the attached agreement. Um at this time, Thames Centre, Middlesex Centre and Strathroyd Caredoc are using eScribe for their agenda management systems. Um North Middlesex and Lucan Bedolph, as well as Southwest Middlesex as of yesterday, have signed off with eScribe to begin moving in that direction. Um and I know that the agreement's being reviewed in Adelaide Metcalf as well. So based on the quotes received, um a consistent approach by providing the same or utilizing the same platform across all locations. Um a recommendation was brought forth between uh the clerk's office and IT that eScribe was the most suitable replacement for e agenda. Um from a financial impact perspective, uh the IT department budgeted $25,000 in 2020 to actually update the e agenda system. After reviewing um and and basically realizing that to get the required features, accessibility and cybersecurity, things that we wanted in place, um the $25,000 wasn't gonna be able to achieve what we were looking for. The um yearly impact of eScribe is $4,900. There's a one-time implementation fee of $1,500. So moving in this direction is gonna save money and also provide that consistency across all locations in the county. Uh the recommendation today is that the county council approves this upcoming change to the electronic agenda management system. And um I can answer any questions you might have.
Great, thanks so much, Chris. Questions or comments on this report? Okay, um you do have a recommendation in front of you and I would ask for a mover and second or at this time. Councillor Richards and councillor Mayhew. And all opposed. And that is carried. Okay, Dirk, population and housing projections for Middlesex County.
I thank you through the warden to council. Um so our our population projections are included as is required by the province in the county's official plan and they're intended to be used for land use planning uh purposes, both at the county and at the municipal level. And of course, they have many other uses in economic development, site locators and and all those things. We last updated them in 2018 when the 2016 census information was released and and council at that time endorsed a projected population range which had a high and a low uh range, which then lets municipalities uh pick where they feel they are on that range. Um it is considered timely and uh to update those projections. We've had some fairly significant underlying factors that have changed. Uh the province has moved from a 20 to a 25 year plan horizon. They've updated their provincial numbers. Uh we know that there's a lot of development occurring within the county and and we try to capture that. And then just the the passing of time. So Watson and Associates, uh a land economist, and I I think they've done a lot of you, a local, a lot of work for local municipalities uh within the county over the years. Uh they were brought on board to help with the more detailed uh demographic analysis that uh we needed for this project. Um so the report says, I won't go over it all. I think uh me, if I if I may, a few minutes to talk about the population forecast and then a couple of the key uh observations that flow out of that data. Um the the report that you've had a chance to look at does include now three scenarios, a low, a medium, which is they call reference and a high scenario. And it's for the county and for each local municipality. And really, it's the provincial ministry of finance numbers that are the basis of that. And then from there, um Watson worked on playing with some of the um assumptions really related to within Ontario migration, people moving to London, Middlesex area from elsewhere within Ontario. Um the, there are three scenarios and uh the low scenario uh looks at a population increase from 74,000 in 2016 to 96,300 by 2046, which is a annual population growth rate of uh 0.9% and a housing growth rate of 1.3%. And as you've seen, uh in all cases, there is a a population increase, there's a larger housing increase uh as the persons per unit, the number of people within each of our units goes down over time. The reference scenario would see the population increase to 107,600 by 2046, which is a annual growth rate of 1.3% and a housing growth rate of 1.7. And then the high scenario would see an increase to 115,000 and an annual growth rate of 1.5% and a housing uh growth rate of 1.9%. And that's compared to um the last 15 years, which we have been uh just shy of uh one half of a percent. Um and so I do believe that the inclusion of scenarios gives us uh municipalities greater flexibility. And I, the high scenario is very likely, you know, the the one that some municipalities will pick. But others at least should really carefully look at the uh the uh the uh reference and the lower scenario. When you have to balance the service provision, increase in your uh sanitary uh water capacity, et cetera. So this at least gives uh those options. Um I did have a call and a conversation uh with councillor Rock uh the end of last week and he asked uh excellent question and I did get two more slides. Uh Chris, if you could throw those on the screen. And the question really was, um how do those percentages compare elsewhere within Ontario? And I and I just got this. Um so the first slide is sort of the history, uh if you will, of the last fifteen years, I believe it is. And Middlesex County is the orange at at roughly half a percent. You can see some of our comparators, the GTH being 1.4% for example. Um Chris, can you go to the next slide? Um so this is uh 2016 to 2041. Uh our population projections that I'm recommending are to 2046, but many municipalities haven't yet updated their projections to the uh 25 years now. So this is a basically a 20-year look. Um the uh I didn't include the low, but the reference, which is the 1.3%, uh the 1.6% in this case is the high uh which is different than the 1.5% over the total time period. But for this 20-year period, that is the number. And so you can see, I think this is the the question that Brian was asking is how does it fit uh with some of the other municipalities that we know are experiencing a lot of growth? You know, particularly uh the GTH. Uh we know that Barry and those areas are really, really growing. Um but this, I I I hope uh provides a little better context. The the number itself, 1.5% sounds uh in some respects, it's a small number, uh but in an annualized uh growth rate, it's a relatively aggressive or high number. So uh thank you for showing that, Chris. Um so that is a high level overview and there's more information, of course, in the report. Uh the, if I could just highlight uh three more things. The uh forecast by major age groups, it does let you get in and 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 get into the numbers and how they look for our uh community. The baby boom generation and uh the people between 56 and 74 years of age roughly. Uh we know, we know that uh outside of the GTA especially, that is a very large percentage of the population and Middlesex County is no different. Um and uh as uh the baby boom ages and the number of older seniors will increase and barely double over the 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 25 years that we're looking at. And then Watson provides some observations on on sort of the average. And I it's always important too, I think, to highlight that um you know, we're not talking about any particular person. This is aggregated, average people uh on overall. Um but as seniors age, they have less mobility, less disposable income, increased healthcare needs. And uh the the, at least for planners, the theory is that that drives demand for higher density forms of housing that are in proximity and more urban and context. And uh so the, at the same time, we have two different trends happening. We have a a demand for housing in our probably the larger urban centers uh where more services are available. But it also does drive down our population uh as the, as people pass away and there's more individual, single people in a household uh where perhaps there were two before. Uh millennials and Generation Z. Um the millennials are sort of those 28 to 40-year-olds, Generation Z or 15 to to 27. And um you know, they're they're key because of course it is that those two groups and the groups following it really are the majority of the future uh labor supply. And there's some observations in the report about uh what that looks like. Um and then they also feel that um the their advice, if you will, is is the extent to which the county can capitalize on demand from those groups uh and encouraging those groups to stay in the county and also to to move here from elsewhere really will drive uh the the next uh sort of housing needs. Um in terms of the the housing issue, um when you get into the detailed housing trends, the population age structure, it does start to reveal some of the uh so in insights into what average houses will look like uh and the type of of uh dwellings that you'll need. We talk about PPU, persons per unit, and that represents sort of an average number of people uh per household. Um there is a graph in the document figure six and it shows the fairly steep decline from 2.98 persons per household on average down to 2.76. They see that continuing. They do, however, believe that it will be moderated. It will, the the this the decline will sort of flatten out over time and they attribute that uh to uh, you know, at the movement of young families to the county to some of the new development that's occurring and and it's more common for young families to have children, as you can appreciate. So over time, they do see that sort of to be moderated um under all three growth scenarios. Um they also, in terms of housing, they're forecasting um that over 21% of new housing uh will be medium and high density forms. Um and I'm gonna, I'll come back to that in a in a moment. In terms of limitations, it is important to note, of course, their their projections, their forecasts, they're not predictions. Um and they are heavily reliant on a few things, uh including past trends and of course statistics, uh Stats Canada. And so um it is the best of available information that we have. But there are times where it is likely not reflective of some of the uh what's occurring within our communities. And it'll be, uh you know, they, there's a a item in your agenda later today that mentions how they're going, they are going to proceed with 2021 census here shortly. Um it'll be, it'd be really fascinating to see what numbers come out of that when they're released in two and three years. Um and and how that occurs and how that folds out during a pandemic. I think it's also worth noting, uh and you know this, uh that assumptions are significantly, uh this, the assumptions behind the data are significantly impacted by external factors which often municipalities have no control over. Uh you know, people's changes in uh, you know, when they have children and some of those things that happen across society in general are fairly similar across the province and the country, frankly. Um and so it's um not something that municipalities can can uh kind of readily change, if you will. Um I also note that there is an inertia in existing populations and and I would go back to the housing. Uh I think that the split of housing between high and medium, um even when fairly significant changes in development occur, so as you know, as much as 20% of housing being higher forms of density. Because the overwhelming uh majority of existing uh housing is single family homes or individual units, it does take quite some time for those to sort of meaningfully change the information. And then um uh last thing uh to note, I guess, is, you know, we know that there, we are experiencing a greater level of development uh within the county compared to the past over the last 15, 20 years. Um and it is hard, however, to know how that's gonna translate into population growth. We, it, you know, it appears that there is changing within Ontario migration and the high scenario uh does attempt to try to capture that. But even that, that, there's there's those competing or or different factors going on where we have new people moving in, but we also have an aging population. And and that naturally will drive down our populations, uh you know, in a negative manner if we didn't have new people coming in. Um and so I did note, uh and I've been talking to um to Jen Huff and Strathroyd Caredoc a bit about how we're gonna do this. I do think it's important and this is highlighted and reminded me perhaps that we need to more closely, sort of in real time, monitor how developments occurring so that we know exactly what lands are available, which ones are are, you know, spoken for by developers with where they are in the process. I think that information, you know, Cindy's always asking me for that kind of information. The school board wants that kind of information. Um and I think it would, it would allow us to do sort of as we go, if we see areas are developing faster, then you could look more quickly at sort of changing your OP and adding, you know, smaller bits of land perhaps rather than waiting until uh you know, the full five years is up. So anyways, in conclusion, uh the projection numbers um have been updated to reflect the longer planned horizon, the new numbers of the provincial uh out of the Ministry of Finance. I I believe that the uh high number would uh does capture some of the rapid development that is occurring occurring. Um and then, of course, the passing of the last couple of years. It was an iterative process. We've gone back and forth with the consultant a number of times as we've worked on these. And I do, uh I am now of the opinion that that the numbers are reasonable. Um and then the last thing I guess I would highlight is that um unlike, uh so the provincial policy statement does require the county to include in its official plan, num- uh allocations by local municipality. But unlike um in the the growth plan in the Toronto area, the numbers, uh the county's official plan is not structured to require municipalities or limit municipalities either to have all of that growth or have less. So uh as time goes on and and we see this, if municipalities realize more growth or less growth, um the county's fish plan doesn't require that uh it's not offending the county's official plan, if you will. So it does give us a greater level of flexibility uh to sort of let uh market forces uh proceed and then um the numbers will will be updated and and reflected that over time. So um that's a somewhat brief summary. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that, Dirk. Um I know that has been a long awaited report for a few municipalities, so appreciate that. Comments on what Dirk has presented. Councillor Vanderheiden.
Yes, thank you through the warden. I must be a real geek because I love reading this.
I must be a real geek because I love reading this kind of stuff and seeing where the numbers come from and what the things are moving forward. And Counselor Warwick earlier said something about making tough decisions and being strong leaders. And I think this helps us to make those decisions. We had a meeting last night at our council. We had our official plan for our secondary plan for our North End. And those are tough decisions because developers know what they want to build. Developers know what they're successful at building. But communities, mine included, have not been really strong in saying, well, wait a minute. Let's stop with this type of building. Let's look at this neighborhood and see what makes sense. We have to now, we all know, we're going to have to make sure that there's fiber down every single road, going to every single home. We can do that now right at the get-go because we're building. We didn't do that before, and now we wish we had sidewalks. We have more people that need walkable communities. We have never, you know, there was lots of times where we said to developer, oh, I don't, you know, that's a side, side street. People can walk on the road. You don't really need a sidewalk there. Well, that will never happen here again. That is wrong. We learn from that. We are going to have to have outlets in garages or attached to homes or somewhere in a park at by a neighborhood in a parking spot so people can have electric cars. We never thought about that before. So things are changing. And when we get these numbers and we get the demographics and we understand them a little bit better, we have a way better opportunity to grow our communities in the way that they should grow and not just to say, let's pop in some more single-family homes and move forward. And so I really appreciate this report. I really appreciate the numbers. We're working on our official plan. I encourage everyone to check out our website for our official plan. It's really, really cool how we're looking forward to the future. And this, this helps us to really do that properly. So I really support this. Thank you.
Any other comments from Counselor Rock?
Yeah, just a follow-up. I talked with Dirk, I think it was last Friday, Dirk, wasn't it? I was my second time through it. I was like Joanne. The first time through it is like, man, that's a big report. But the second time through it, you get a better, for me, I got a better understanding. I talked with Dirk and he gave me a better understanding to the basis to get to the numbers. And I think once I heard that, it was certainly a lot better. And I agree with you, Joanne, that it's a, it's a great report. It gives, certainly gives you a better process going forward. So I want to thank Dirk for your time there last Friday. That helped a lot. So, yeah.
And Counselor DeBeet.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Dirk, thank you for that report. I too really like to see this kind of information. And you're absolutely right. I think it is fundamental to, it's foundational to our planning in terms of how we're going to move forward. And like, as you were mentioning, maybe there's a thought there that we should be doing frequent check-ins to say, where are we with the numbers at different points and times? And as you suggest, maybe allow for different pockets of development to expand somewhere. I think the whole underlying sort of thought here is too that, to the extent that we have information, we can make better decisions and staying on top of it will help us do that. And as you mentioned, too, and as Counselor Vanderheiden was going through the list of things about plugins and all that kind of thing. There are a lot of changes coming. And I think sometimes developers really do hesitate to move into new things. The new urbanism kind of concepts that are evident in Europe and in parts of the United States. I mean, you can have a variety of homes in neighborhood that create communities where the seniors can stay and be part of a community and where children are on the streets, too. Those communities, by the way, in the manner, in the way that they're built, automatically include things like streets that incorporate Division Zero kind of stuff. Like the, the streets are conducive to slower traffic and that kind of thing. To the extent that we can make intelligent decisions about how we incorporate all of this and for what kinds of populations, we can save ourselves money. And I don't know, discussions about whether we need four-way stops or streetlights in different corners that maybe save ourselves some money. So I too wanted to add my thanks for the report and the information that is provided because it is, as I say, foundational, I think, to helping us all meet the future in more organized ways. We don't want to be spending money over and over again. We need to make wise investments in how we use our infrastructure monies and road monies and all those other things. So, thank you.
Hey, any other comments? Clarifications for Dirk? Okay, seeing none. There is the recommendation to adopt the housing growth forecast. If I can get a mover and seconder for that, please. Counselor Ropp and Counselor Vanderheiden, all opposed? And that's carried. Moving on to correspondence and information items. General payables to January eighth, twenty twenty-one totaling six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and three cents. Planning payables to January eighth, twenty twenty-one totaling four thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and fifty-one cents. Electronic payments for the month of December twenty twenty totaling two million, seventy-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-six cents. Social service payables to January eighth, twenty twenty-one totaling six hundred and sixty-one thousand, fifty-nine dollars and forty-three cents. Strathmere Lodge payables to January eighth, twenty twenty-one totaling two hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. Road payables to January eighth, twenty twenty-one totaling one million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and twelve cents. MLPs payables to January eighth, twenty twenty-one totaling nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and twelve cents. ITS payables to January eighth, twenty twenty-one totaling one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and ten cents. Economic development payables to January eighth, twenty twenty-one totaling sixty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Okay, a mover and seconder to receive those for information, please. Counselor Cornielsen and Counselor Mayhew. All opposed, carried. Strathmere Lodge Census Report, December twenty twenty. Counselor Vanderheiden.
Thank you. I just wonder if maybe we could have a little update on Strathmere Lodge then, how things are going? Because I know that the vaccine was rolled out there and how, Brent, do you think things are moving along? I hope that things are positive, but I haven't really heard since then, so.
Yes, through the warden. Last Thursday, all residents received the first dose of the Pfizer vaccine. So we don't have a date yet, but within the next three weeks, public, local public health officials should be back to administer the second dose. Meanwhile, vaccination for staff is currently happening through London. So we're certainly encouraging the staff to go to London. We have heard, of course, that there's a temporary shortage of vaccines. So there are no new appointments being, being granted by London in terms of staff getting vaccinated. So there's a bit of a hiccup there. But certainly, we're in the process of trying to get all staff, as many staff as possible vaccinated as well. I think council knows that we've had a second outbreak, which consists of one staff case. And hopefully, in consultation with the public health unit tomorrow, we'll be able to declare this one resolved as well.
Okay, thank you very much for that update, Brent. Counselor DeBeet.
Thank you, Warden, through you to Brent. Thank you for the update. I did have a question with respect to the waiting list. I noticed that the, the numbers over year over year have increased significantly. And we still, I mean, the gap in terms of how many beds we have versus the vacancies is not even close. I'm just trying to make sense of that. Is there a blip in terms of the people who are wanting or demand? Or what's going on here?
Yes, through the warden. As you can see by the occupancy report, for example, we're probably still about ten beds short of being full. And I suspect that many of the other homes in the region are slowly getting up to speed with filling beds. And that's a result, of course, of the pandemic and at one point, not getting a lot of admissions from the hospital, et cetera. So I think we and all homes are slowly getting up to speed. And that, of course, will help address the growing waitlist.
So the, the people, the current hundred and, about a hundred and fifty people are actually waiting for homes. Their list, their choices, the people who have chosen our home and the number they're allowed, they're showing up on all those lists. There aren't, and last year at this point, we had many fewer. But the pandemic backlog is really the explanation here then.
Yes, through the warden. So yes, the pandemic is a large part of it. And yet, just to clarify, that the people on our waitlists are also on the waitlist for other homes.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Anything else for Brent? Okay, thanks for that, Brent. Letter from the Ministry of Children, Community and Social Services announcing the release of Building a Strong Foundation for Success: Reducing Poverty in Ontario for 2020 to 2025. Copy of a letter from the London and Middlesex Community Housing to the City of London, Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee with respect to Governance Review. Counselor Vanderheiden.
Just on that one, I still think we really need to pay attention to this because with all the things happening with COVID and the need for housing in our, in our county. When I read these reports, I think I read Middlesex County in a couple of titles because it happens to be in the title. But I didn't really see a whole lot in there about helping the county out in the housing needs that we have. And our gap is huge. And I know that Strathrow Karadok has a gap, and I'm sure that other communities do in our county. And I really want to see this, a stronger voice there other than what we seem to be having.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes, through you, Warden. I would just echo Counselor Vanderheiden's comment. Reading this report, it doesn't seem like the needs of what are in rural communities are obviously different than what's needed in the city of London. And none of that is addressed in these reports that were sent to us. And so I do think as well that we need to stay on top of this and make sure that the needs of Middlesex County residents are being addressed because their needs are very, very different as what's in the city of London.
Thank you for that. Anything else on that one? Letter from the Solicitor General advising that the deadline for municipalities to prepare and adopt a community safety and wellbeing plan has been extended to July first, twenty twenty-one. Copy of a letter from Gravel Watch, Ontario, providing a copy of Ontario on the Rocks, a report on the economic, social and environmental consequences of rural, excuse me, of resource extraction. Copy of the November and December twenty twenty Monthly Board of Health Updates. Final approval of Rosewood Plan of Subdivision, Phase One, File thirty-nine T dash TC dash seventeen zero one, Thames Centre. Report from Dirk. Final approval, Harris Road, Sararans Plan of Subdivision, File thirty-nine T dash MC one two zero two, Municipality of Middlesex Centre, another report from Dirk. Final approval of Lucan Estates and Lucan McNeil Plan of Subdivision, Phase Four, Files thirty-nine T dash LB thirteen zero one and thirty-nine T dash LB zero seven zero two, Lucan Bedolph. Report from Dirk. Final approval of Phase One, Westwood Estates Plan of Subdivision, File thirty-nine T dash NM eighteen zero one, Municipality of North Middlesex, report from Dirk. Lots of reports from Dirk this, this month, cleaning up, I guess, what was left from twenty twenty. Letter from the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, providing information on a newly-formed Conservation Authorities Working Group to assist with changes to the Conservation Authorities Act. Application for council exemption for cutting of woodlands, Township of Adelaide Metcalf, eleven seventy-nine Eggermont Drive, Van Erk. And it should be noted that the hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, February sixteenth. Counselor Vanderheiden.
And I'm only going to address this one, but I mean, I mean to address all three. So I'll just do this once for all three. When those reports come forward in February, I would really like to see a bit of an explanation on where trees are being replanted. I know we always ask if there's going to be trees replanted. I would like to know where, when and how many we are actually replanting. Because we keep getting these exemptions to cut trees. But I never see any reports saying that we're replanting trees. And if we continue to cut, replanting in the future is going to be useless. So I really would like to know when and how we're doing that, because I think that's really important.
Thank you. Application for council exemption for cutting woodlands, Municipality of Strathroy Karadok, sixty-eight sixty-four, Old Drive Vieira. And the hearing is scheduled for the same date. Application for council exemption for cutting of woodlands, Township of Lucan Bedolph, Lot seventeen, Concession seven, Blomman. And again, the hearing is on February sixteenth. AML updates from December seventeenth, twenty twenty to January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Ontario Provides More Financial Relief For Municipalities During COVID Nineteen. Counselor Vanderheiden.
This is an administrative piece, but for this, I wonder if it's something we should send a note to the province to say thank you for this, that helps us move through some of the challenges we've had through COVID. Because we know, we should say thank you when we actually do receive funds.
Yes, always, always be thankful for what money's received. Cindy, could you work with Kathy to get something out for that?
Through the warden, sorry, I had to find my unmute there. But yes, definitely, I can work with Kathy Bunting and we can get a letter. Thanks very much for the suggestion.
Final approval, ANM SOD Supply Plan of Subdivision, File thirty-nine T dash MC zero six zero three, Middlesex, or Municipality of Middlesex Centre, report from Dirk. Letter from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing advising that Middlesex County will receive three hundred and fifty-seven thousand for twenty twenty-one COVID-related operating pressures. I think that speaks back to number twenty-five. Letter from Statistics Canada advising that the twenty twenty-one census will take place in May of twenty twenty-one. Okay, can I get a mover and a seconder to receive those items for information, please? Counselor Warwick and a seconder, Counselor Richards. All opposed? And that's carried. Inquiries. Maybe I will include the reminder for that for our roundtable this Thursday at seven PM. I believe you've all received the Zoom information. If you haven't, just send Bill an ask and he'll send that out. And if you can make sure that members of your councils receive that invitation. It certainly looks like it's going to be an interesting discussion. I think Bill mentioned earlier, we're fortunate enough to have Minister Elliott. is going to join us as well as Ministers Yurik and McNauton. And I believe we will have some words of welcome from our premier. Bill, did you want to add anything to this at this time?
I'm interested in the in council's help in formulating questions, so I sent a couple of notes out today in the chat saying if you have questions you'd like for any of the ministers, please provide them to me tomorrow. I'll send out a reminder tomorrow as well about it, just so you can, you know, and the warden said, if you could just remind your local councils about it, we've actually had quite a few local council members say that they're going to join us, so that's great. We've also had a lot of interest from the east. Eastern Ontario Wardens Group participate and hear some of the candid comments that we're going to hear from the ministers. So it's pretty exciting. I think it's going to be a good group. And yes, the premier, I got assurance today, the premier is going to participate in some form or fashion. He may not be live, but the warden and I did provide him with a number of questions that we thought, so we'll we'll figure that out later today. But Minister Elliott, who's a very good friend of the County Middlesex, is going to be joining us and and of course, hearing from our local MPPs and cabinet ministers is going to be exciting as well. So yeah, we're excited, right, Warden? Like, we're we're gonna practice our routine, maybe tomorrow or the next day, we'll have it down.
Yeah, yeah, no, looking forward to having that discussion with such a great, a great roundtable in the spring, so looking forward to this one. I know that there are some members of council that do have a conflict that night, but we will be recording it and we'll be able to send you the link so that you'll be able to see how the discussion goes. Um, you have in front, are there any other inquiries? Sorry. One last. Okay, you've got a list of the county council meetings in front of us. We don't meet until February. And then, of course, I think you've all received information on the dates of our budget meetings. And of course, you're all welcome to join in on those. We do have to go into closed session. And I believe on the agenda, it speaks as to why we need to. There's a number of different reports that we will be receiving. Solicitor client privilege, labor relations and all that. If I could get a mover and seconder to move into closed session. Councilor Richards and Councilor DeBeet. And all opposed? And that's carried. And we'll just wait for the live YouTube to go off.